Alright everybody, we're gonna get the meeting rolling here. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not occurring on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on the matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 2410153B2. I'll call this meeting to order. And, uh, Liz, would you leave some questions today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Uh, we'll move into commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Mike, we'll start with you.
Um, I attended the hospital board meeting last night. One of the issues that was addressed was the cybersecurity breach. Um, everything was in place, people had been notified. So that was, and good news for the citizens. The Friday, he was notified that they did receive the Hensley grant, and it's over a million dollars, and it will provide a new mammogram machine and a CT machine.
Next line, JR, Kathy? Okay, we'll move into staff reports on meetings-
Commissioner Sparks, I'm not sure if Commissioner Helming is on-
Oh, sorry, Dee, are you on the phone?
No, sir.
Do you have any reports?
Well, currently, I'm at a tourism conference, and we are learning all about the new plans that the state is getting ready to roll out for tourism for the next three years.
Okay, well, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, commission. Um, I think in your guys' backup, there should be a letter from Great Basin College. They're gonna, uh, no longer be present here. I thi- they will have a presence on the school district property and helping the, you know, the high school kids with continued education, but they aren't gonna have a building here over there for adult ed. So, that's, uh, that's some bad news, but hopefully, uh, hopefully, we can use that building for something else. Um, wanna thank JR, he's already out trying to kill crickets. So, everybody knows that they're out and about. And, uh, everything else that we have is on the agenda. The couple items that aren't on the agenda that I told you guys would be would be the contract for, um, the rail park. Uh, legal we had last week, um, they were out for some training, so we didn't get to that, but it will be on an upcoming agenda, so.
Uh, so we'll move into public comments for non-agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Yes, sir.
Uh, good morning, John Davis for the record. Two issues that I got-ish. Uh, one, property owner at 70 East 8th and one on Hilltop. 70 East 8th, there's a horrible feral cat problem in Lander County. Uh, I watch a gentleman feed the cats on your sidewalks across the street from 70 East 8th, but I'm fed up with having to deal with those cats on my property. I don't want to have to do that. I'm asking the county to do something about the cat problem that we have. You can't put anything outside without the cats peeing and taking- they're overrunning the property. So, that's the first problem I got. Second problem is code enforcement. Same property, TV cable outfits next door, dealing with six-foot-high weeds coming into it. Junk parked on, I mean, the bucket truck's been parked there forever. Nothing, not in use for 20 years probably. Uh, and it's not just that property, it's in town, general Hilltop area. And weeds are one thing, that's, but it's the junk. The junk that's sitting around, that's devaluing my property in certain areas that is almost impossible to sell now, when then in, uh, on my personal area that I actually take pride in and take care of, the taxes are going through the roof. So, as somebody that takes care of their property and takes pride in it, I'm being penalized with higher taxes from the county. Where if somebody that's not taking care of their property and it's junked up, they're not paying hardly anything. Devaluing the property, which is affecting everybody in the county. I pay more than my fair share, I feel. I mean, the assessment went up 35%. Taxes are capped at 3%, but when does that 3% a year starts adding up? So, I don't know, something's gotta be done with it. I'm being penalized on both ends of the spectrum because of the, the property taxes and code enforcement that's bringing down the value of that property next door.
Well, John, it is public comment for non-agenda items. I wanna thank you for your comment, um, but we, we definitely can't discuss it, but we could put it on a future, um, agenda as an action item in which we could discuss it and throw ideas of it around or whatever. Is that something you'd like us to do?
Fair enough, yeah, I'd like to see that.
Alright, well, thank you, is there anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Is there any other public comment for non-agenda items only?
Morning, guys.
Morning, Bob.
Uh, Bob Kestner for the record. I just wanna make a quick comment about the weeds and the ditches. I live out at 63526th Street, and it seems like in the past I used to mow the ditches. And now the weeds are six feet tall and they just, they're out of control. And I would just like to see if maybe we can get some, uh, mowing done on the ditches. They're not even gonna be able to get to fire hydrants here pretty soon, you know, so it could be a safety issue as far as that goes as well, so. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Uh, is there any other public comment?
Pam Harrington for the record. I just wanted to invite you guys again to go, um, do a Sage Grousse count. It'd be tomorrow now, we got snowed out last time. It'd be tomorrow morning. If you do wanna attend that, just contact Jeremy Lutz, you know, our, our endowed person. He's gonna organize it for the commissioners. So, that's all, thank you.
Right, any other public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of April 11th, 2024 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of March 14th, 2024 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of March 28th, 2024 Meeting Minutes. And four, approval of payroll change requests. So, we have items one, two, and four, I believe. I didn't receive minutes for three. So, is there a motion?
No.
Go ahead, motion and a second. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll move into, uh, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove payment of bills. We're gonna pull check number 223357.
I'll make a motion, repay the remainder of the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we pay check 223357.
Okay, we have a motion to pay that check.
Second.
Okay, and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I abstain, it's made to my employer. Okay, so, we have a public hearing at 9:15, so we have to wait until 9:15. So, we'll take a break here for five minutes, and then, uh, we'll get back after.
This conference will now be recorded.
We're just gonna wait till 9:15 here. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna open this public hearing. It is review, consideration, and possible action to approve/disapprove zone change application number 24-0008 filed by Emerald Land Company, LLC, to change the zoning on APNs 011-020-25 and 011-020-27 from A2, five-acre agricultural district to allow for higher-density residential development. The subject properties are north and south of Yellow Brick Road, approximately 872 feet east of the intersection of Yellow Brick Road and 26th Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada. This was considered at the March 20th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion to approve, which died for a lack of second.
Do you wanna start the whole, or you want me to start?
You just read it in, and that's what happened at the commission meeting. Because the code specifies that if you don't, uh, disapprove of the, uh, change, it automatically is approved. We decided we better put it on the agenda. They are working, my understanding, Shelby could probably take over at this point, but my understanding is that staff is working, um, on this.
Uh, yeah, so Shelby, not planning coordinator for the record?
One second, Shelby, I just wanna clarify what the council says. So, you said, Bill, did I understand you right? That if there was no motion, that it's automatically approved? Is that what you said?
It would be if the, yeah, it'll, it'll, if it's not disapproved, if it's not, if it's not acted on, okay-
When, does that one stay the same?
No, so we have 45 days to hear this and make a motion on it, or else it becomes approved. That's why with the planning commission making no motion, it's been brought to the commission, so a motion would be made one way or the other.
Okay, got you. Alright, thank you. Alright, sir, sorry Shelby, I just wanted to-
And so, I've been in conversation with Kirk since the planning commission meeting. Um, we have set up a meeting to kinda discuss the development between, uh, the developer and staff and kinda go over that and come to an agreement. Um, last I, time I heard, they wanted to table this item, no?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna proceed today, yeah.
You wanna go through with it today? Okay, yeah, I guess we're going through with the hearing. So, uh, uh, you've read the staff report. Staff does, uh, recommend denial just because, uh, the master plan doesn't support this. Uh, we have some septic density issues in the area already. Um, if this project were to build out to full development, um, it would intensify those septic density issues. Um, so what we requested was they extend the sewer line, um, if we do go forward with the A1 zone, um, which creates one-acre lots. The property right now is currently zoned for five-acre lots, so I mean, it's quite a, quite a change in the density. Um, so that's kind of staff's viewpoint on it.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, um, so I'll go ahead and hear testimony. Uh, anybody that wants to speak to it and address the commission?
Sure. Good morning, I'm Kirk Johnson with Nevada Johnson, Inc., Emerald Land Company. And we're asking for approval today on our current 70-acre, 70.15-acre piece, zoning from A2 to A1, one-acre lots. Um, currently, it meets all current code statutes, does not approach on any septic density whatsoever. We will be creating these parcels through subsequent parcel maps, and we're always very excited about subsequent parceling. It, it works best for everybody. The developer works good for the county. In a, in a time in Battle Mountain where there's not a great amount of growth, we can do these properties through subsequent parceling and move forward three lots at a time. Um, we, we also feel very strongly that this project is good for everybody. If we put in two and a half acres, if we get two and a half acres zoning and we go to one acres, we get to spread our development costs over two and a half times as many lots. It gives us an opportunity to put out these lots at a better price point to the Battle Mountain community. It also gives Lander County an opportunity to get two and a half times the tax revenue on the same infrastructure and the same gross acreage. I'm, I'm just, uh, I, I can't figure out what reason that we would not move forward with this project. And like I say, we're asking for an approval today. I would like to, if it's alright with the board, just brief you on what happened at the plea, planning meeting, just so you understand how we got here with no denial, no approval, and not much recommendation. If that's alright?
Yeah, please do.
Okay. So anyhow, we, we're at the planning meeting, and it comes up on the agenda. The chairman gives a description of the application. We give a presentation, you know, on our, our project, and, um, it proceeds. The chairman had some discussion. There was not a lot of discussion on the zoning. Some conversation came up about the septic, and we discussed that. I have a, a strong issue with the, with the septic problems that everybody's concerned with. There's no saving septic systems that I'm aware of. It's not like going to the movie theater and holding a seat for somebody. Somebody shows up with an application, and they meet all the requirements for a septic, they get a septic permit. And we're not taking all the septic permits. We're coming three lots at a time. So anyhow, this meeting gets going and, and, um, all of a sudden, staff gets up and starts talking about sewer, sewer capacity, volume. And I'm completely lost at this point. I got an A1 project with one-acre lots, and I'm doing all septic. I'm never coming for sewer on that project. And then, it goes on and, and, this map is up on the wall about four foot, right, and they point back here and say, "Well, when you get through here, this Joe guy in the back, his property's gonna be worth nothing." Well, we happen to be Joe, 'cause we own that parcel also. But, it's not worth nothing. We're coming to you three lots at a time. Anybody in this county can come for a septic permit. If they use them all up and there's none left for us, then we have to go another direction. We're okay with that. Happens in every county, every subdivision. When you draw the circle for the septics, there's only somebody can go there. The state, state is very knowledgeable about how many septics you can put on how many acres before you contaminate the groundwater. You get to look at it every three lots. Like I say, we're, we're here today asking for approval. I was kinda disappointed at the planning meeting. The way it went down, I, I just didn't feel it was treated with any respect at all. When we prepare a project, we believe we've done our homework. We don't show up here and just show you some toxic waste dump and hope, you know, you'll throw it in and we can sell the damn thing later. We do our homework, this is a perfect fit, it works. We're not encroaching on any septic density at all. There's more septic than we're trying to get. And, you know, they're looking at a total build-out, is what they're talking about. Well, let's just say hypothetically, we don't do this project now, and 33 people come in and get septic, and I show up, and there's no septic for my property. It's not worthless. I have to work with the county and try and find up another, you know, another program, another way to make the property work. It's no different than anybody else. And, um, you know, we're, we're hoping that we presented a project to you that you can approve and feel good about it, and we're excited to move forward. And if there's an issue, we would love to hear about it, because in the planning meeting, there was not a lot to discuss you about the issues. They had septic with, that is not an issue on this project. It's available. So, anyhow, we'd love to hear any comment about, you know, what possible issues we might have on this project, 'cause I, I don't know what they are.
I have them. I'll just start right here.
Okay.
First, it goes against our master plan over there. The third, second part is, um, why are you doing three at a time, sir?
It's a parcel, because there's, there's not enough growth to come to Battle Mountain and start throwing in subdivisions.
So, yeah, exactly, you don't throw in a subdivision, you do three at a time, you don't have to do it follow any of the guidelines that go, no. Uh, we had that problem already-
You know, we, we've had that-
Excuse me?
Let me finish.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you don't. And you don't, so you do three at a time here, you do three at a time there, and so, at the end of the day, there's nothing, and there's no sidewalks, there's none of that stuff that you have to do for subdivision. And so, that's one of the reasons that they put it against the master plan, is because it is, uh, and, sir, you can get, shake your head at-
No, I'm okay, go on, I'm sorry.
No, I, please.
I'm sorry, go on.
Yes.
I'm just making notes of what you're saying.
Okay, for one, it goes against our master plan.
Sure.
We don't spend all the money that we, that we put into the master plan and all the hours to turn right around and go against it, 'cause what the hell is it for to begin with if you don't follow it to begin with? At that, when we're doing our master plan, that's the time for you to come in with your ideas and go, "These are, these are the ideas you guys might think of", instead of turning right around and going against your master plan. I mean, to me, that, what, what is it even worth if you go right around, turn around, and go against it? And the one-acre parcels, that, yeah, it's your property that you can't do anything else with for, um, there's no sewer out there, and the contamination of one, and one- no, I'm sorry, I'm against that. I live out there, for one, and, um, I don't believe, if you're gonna do three at a time, if you're not going to do a true subdivision, then you're doing, you're going in as a contractor to go underneath that part of it. And I'm sorry, that's what I mean, we can agree to disagree, but that's the way I look at it, and I've sat here long enough to see that that happened. And it's, what, what we end up having is people coming in here and say, "Why does our town look like crap?" Well, it's because we do, nothing is ever planned. Nothing ever follows code. And we split it up and change it, and split it up and change it, and then, not against you, you're in it for to make money. And that's all there is to it, and that's regardless. So, you do and make your money and go, and then we're left with the aftermath to try to figure out how to make this town appealing for anybody else to come in. And so, um, by all means, go ahead.
Well, I am absolutely pretty sure Nevada Johnson, Inc. has left no skeletons in this town. I built as many houses as anybody in this town. And, uh, I finished Crystal Sage, I think I did 48 houses here. We worked with the planners, the staff, we worked the building department, the commissioners, and we have always put our best foot forward, and we are not trying to get out of anything. I don't understand this. When we come with a subsequent parcel map, on a one-acre parcel, nobody in the whole world is ever gonna ask me to put in a sidewalk, curb, gutter, sewer, you know? It's not gonna happen. This board isn't gonna ask me, and I've been in every county, nobody's gonna ask me to do that. I am getting out of nothing, and that's why everybody keeps acting like I'm trying to raid the cookie jar. I'm not asking for any favors. This is a legitimate project. It allows growth to go forward with subsequent parceling, and it's a great project. So what, it comes three at a time? It's how we can grow in Battle Mountain, because there isn't enough absorption. Tell me where the buyers are to go in and put a subdivision in. And I wouldn't put curb gutter and sidewalk in a million years on a one-acre project, never.
Let me, let me ask you this question.
Sure.
So, it's the, so the master plan is nearing completion. What, and, and if we have this document, this guiding document saying basically what Commissioner Anshel is saying, that it's not necessarily written in a way to favor what you're wanting to do, is that, is that a correct statement?
Is it written yet? Is it written yet?
No.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a work in progress, eh?
Yes.
Yes, Kim.
Kimberly Buffington, if I could speak to the master plan. The current master plan that is on the books is 2010, 14 years old. The new draft master plan that's been in progress for about seven years is nearing final, um, revision. So, I would ask for that clarification. Really, the current master plan is what, is that what's being looked to? That this doesn't meet the current adopted master plan? Or are you saying that it doesn't meet the draft master plan? Just for clarification.
So, currently, it doesn't meet either one, 'cause the old master plan calls this area out as medium density, um, which doesn't allow for one-acre lots. The new master plan calls it out as rural, which doesn't allow for one-acre lots either.
So, this, this is my concern.
So, can I, can I finish this and then I'll sit down? So, on the existing master plan, um, the infrastructure that is out there in this area now did not exist. So, none of this would've had, would've been purging. The, the other piece of that is that you have a Lander County code that says when you adopt a new zone change, when you create this and you find this desirable to have, it amends your master plan. So, in the spirit of adopting something that's, that would make sense to do now, that maybe didn't have the foresight when you created the master plan to begin with, you actually have a Lander County code that says when you modify a zone, uh, adopt a change, you are also modifying, you're amending the master plan. So, you in spirit will bring it into compliance by adopting it if you chose to move forward with it. So, you would not be in conflict.
Okay, thank you. So, so this is, so I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this right. So, Shelby, you stated that it was, it was envisioned as medium density. Um, and I don't know how typically it works with medium density. Is that something where counties come in and they put a lot of infrastructure in? If it's in, if it's in fact going to be medium density? Or is that, is infrastructure more for stuff that's considered higher density, right? Uh, so that's my first question. Because it would be, it would seem to me, if I'm thinking about this correctly, if it was medium density, then we went ahead and put infrastructure in, we're almost, in a sense, of working against what our master plan had envisioned anyway. It's almost like, as a county, we had envisioned that change, so we're putting the utilities out there to support the growth. Do you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah, no, and, uh, you're correct. Because in the medium density, I think it calls out for, um, five-acre lots and above, or something similar to that. Uh, but it doesn't go down to one acre.
Right, so, so my, my point is, is with five-acre lots, why would you run water and septic? If that's, if that was in fact the intention to, if that's what the old master plan showed as a medium density, why are we laying in this infrastructure if not to support smaller acreage parcels?
Yeah, I can't answer that question, 'cause I wasn't here.
I, I would like to, too. So, so a couple things, the, for clarification, is, uh, one, this isn't a project, it's a zone change. So, a project would come, and this is what, this is what staff was speaking to when, when we were at the planning commission meeting, is, "Hey, if there, somebody comes with a project, we know, they show us how many homes are going in, what they plan on doing, we can tell them if our infrastructure will, will take that, if it's worth extending, if it's not, so on and so forth." But this is, this is a blanket zone change that goes out much further than infrastructure that's laid in place that you're referring to. The infrastructure that's laid in place that you're referring to, they could border up alongside them, put as many homes as they could on it, and they would have all of our recommendations to, to back that. That's what it's there for. Um, but this goes out far and beyond. As far as the, the septics and, and people being able to apply for them, and the, and the Joe that Kirk was speaking to. In, in our master plan, if one of these mines is putting in, going in somewhere, and it's gonna affect one homeowner as well, and this is an example I gave at the planning commission as well. If it's gonna affect one homeowner as well, the county opposes that until they mitigate that. So, with, with this section of ground being able to be rezoned to one-acre lots, there's 67, um, septics that are available out there. Every one of these could be ate up at that point. So, I'm not opposed to your project. I'm just stating the facts so everybody knows what they're dealing with. The, 'cause you've clearly stated you plan on bringing these down to one-acre lots.
Correct.
But it eats up every single septic. So if there's a gentleman that, you know, not in the notice zone that has a two and a half acre lot, that one day wants to go put in a septic and build his home, but he's been saving his funds to do so, ten years from now, he shows up, comes in, puts a septic permit, and you know what we tell him? We say, hey, sorry, you either got to pay to get infrastructure ran to you, which could be millions of dollars, or you got to do some sort of modified system that's going to be engineered, and get that approved, and go through all these other steps. So it does impact people that are outside of this. The point of putting this infrastructure in, and, you know, I've asked Kirk, bring us... I would... To do it three at a time, if it's so expensive for the developer, then let's enter into a developer's agreement with this county commission, and let us put curb gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, make it a nice development. And then as each lot is sold, the county would be reimbursed a portion for each lot, so it's not off the developer, if that's what the case would be. But we could do this responsibly and not steal from the guy who's trying to save. So a lot to unpack there, but... And there's a lot more that I could say to all of this. But I just want the commission to be aware of a lot of the conversation that took place there, and answer to some of the questions that he's...
So Kirk, correct?
Correct.
So wouldn't it... So you're wanting to change the zoning for this whole thing. So rather than doing a smaller section that would actually be closer to the infrastructure that the county has paid for and put in, that people could hook up to that, what... Why couldn't you... Why wouldn't you consider just that? Making these smaller projects and utilize the infrastructure that the county has put in, rather than doing a blanket of the whole thing to where you have one acres out here, but there's no county infrastructure?
Well, see, there's another map that's going to come in front of you probably next month, which I don't think you've seen yet. So it's kind of hard to figure out. But this is the Round Mountain frontage. And this goes back...
What map are we looking at here?
You don't have one, I don't believe. This is... We're having a workshop on this. I want to call it a meeting, right? Anyhow, we're having a meeting on this today at one thirty, I believe. And this property starts at Round Mountain. And how we come up with these things is not... We don't just dream them up. I mean, I talked to Bert just a little earlier. How things happened on this piece of property, and Yellow Brick going out, was in two thousand and fourteen or fifteen. I think you were... I think you were involved, weren't you? We took that property out there, and Battle Mountain had a big concern about their emergency access to the property on this side of the freeway. Something went wrong. They couldn't get emergency vehicles in or out, and they couldn't get people out. They came to us. We didn't go to them. And they said, can we get some easements? You know, so that we have this access. We gave them the easement down Yellow Brick and across Round Mountain. Everybody says, well, they improved it. That's correct. We didn't ask them to. We're thankful. But on this project, the sewer's two thousand feet away, and they're one acre lots. I would never put sewer on them. I wouldn't do it. Why am I putting sewer on a septic? There is all kinds of alternatives when we run up against a wall on septic density. It's not over by any means. I... My house right now, that I live in for the last twelve years, has a denitrification on it. Those things last longer than your roof. My house before had one. My house before that had one. I put them in for twenty years. That's always an option. There's gray water that comes out the back of that tank. When you run into the density issue, you work it out. We get with the county. So what would you guys like to do? There's never... I've never seen a situation where I took Joe's property, that everybody talks about, which happens to be ours, and made it worthless. Never. And it's not going to happen here, no matter how many septics we put in. There's always a workaround, Bert. Always.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I mean, as far as I know, unless you tell it differently.
And like I say, this is where it goes back to the county paying for a lot of infrastructure. For example, we are... There are places here that do go over. Out here by the golf course is one of them. And now we're looking at running sewer lines out there to lower that density, right? Because it's caused the problem. Then that burden becomes on the taxpayer. Where if we're, you know, have a little foresight and work together, there's no reason why we couldn't solve this. If you were to bring something to us that is a true project, not just a zone change, that went along all of the frontage there, that has access to sewer and water, then the back, it may reduce... It may reduce the back so much that it makes sense to go to the one acre, and it never would touch anybody's septic density. But with this overlay, it just shows a whole bunch of area that could be and would be. And that's what needs to be brought to everybody's attention. And I think that's what's important and why we're... Our staff report, you know, recommended denial. It's not because we don't want to grow. We didn't... This commission and everybody here isn't working hard to put in sewer, water, and all this infrastructure to not grow. But responsible growth, and then also to not abut right up to thirty acre parcels and twenty acre parcels or one acre parcels. You know, there's that staggered growth, so...
And I was... I brought that point up, because that's the other thing. Again, is I really don't have a dog in the fight, but I'm trying to think sensibly and responsibly as far as property owners who are already out there. But it's like, that just seems like it's against the natural progression of things, is that you have higher density, and it moves out to medium and then to below. But you... So we've got a lot of places out there that are large parcel places, but now development is encroaching in. It just doesn't seem to me that it's like a natural progression of things to put one acre parcel on the back of somebody's forty acre parcel. It just doesn't seem... This doesn't seem right.
I'm really glad you brought that up, Brian, because if you look at the property starting back, you got twenties, fives, two and a halves, and ones. Like I said at the planning meeting, if that isn't a natural progression, transition, I surrender. We're trying to transition the property all the way to Round Mountain. And it... We're going to work that out. The one acres make sense there. There's nothing wrong with one acres there. And I'm just asking, the septic issue to me is a moot point. Anybody can argue anything they want. We're allowed to get septics, just like this Joe guy, or other thirty-seven acres. And I don't understand why we're being denied because of the septic. It's not right. We're not encroaching. And the reason why we come with the subsequent parceling, we're not. We're literally... I would like someone to tell me what we're getting away with by doing subsequent parceling that we wouldn't do if we subdivided. Can anybody give me that information, please?
Anybody answer that question?
Can't do it. I promise.
Yes, there's one in the back there.
Good morning, everyone. Aaron Martinez, county engineer, for the record. So again, just to start off, you know, I respect you and promote development.
I can run back at you. We got through that at the last meeting.
I love seeing growth and development, and private businesses doing well. Like, that's a good thing for everybody, most certainly. I don't speak for staff, but, you know, I think they probably share those same values that I do. But to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, what happens is, is when you go through a subdivision map, as Mrs. Ancho eloquently identified, you fall under a lot of different requirements. And one of them is water rights and how you're addressing the sewer aspects, along with typical county code, which are streetlights, and can impose curb gutter and sidewalk. And so what happens under the subsequent parceling, which is why I stood up here, you asked what the difference is, is that you'd be required to show through NDEP, through your subdivision map, that you can meet the water right requirements, and that you can meet the sewer adjustment requirements. And so to kind of segue from that, the master plan has looked at this years ago and said, look, if we increase the density in this area, we are going across the fence and messing with someone else's property unknowingly, because the densities are set by the zoning. The zoning says the minimum size of acreage, you can do these parcels. And so the master plan very smartly identified, if you increase the density of that, you're going to mess with your septic density, and that's going to be a problem. So truly, at the end of the day, all we're talking about is extending sewer line. And this gentleman, obviously, doesn't pencil in his business portfolio, but maybe a higher density could, and that would, you know, allow him to pay for the sewer extension. Or as the county manager identified, maybe there's some sort of development agreement partnership approach that could be extended. But the whole point is, is that the septic is an issue. The master plan made it a key issue, which is why they forced that zoning district overlay the way it is. If you change that to a different zoning district, the kind of the consequence is that, hey, I come... I do three parcels today. I come and do another three, another three. What is going to stop you from allowing me to just continue to progress in that fashion, which basically has positioned the county to allow one acre development? Because if... Why did you zone it that way if you don't want one acre development? So I hope that answers your question.
That gives me a better picture, yes. Do you have a response, Bert?
Well, I do. The thing of it is, is that we, at the planning staff, brought both maps. And Bill let us go ahead and deal with them both at the same time. Chairman asked if we could bring in this one, so that they could see the total picture. I mean, I don't know. There's three, four hundred out... Like I built out here already. There's three, four hundred houses that go in just that green area. Which, you know, I don't know how many birthdays we're going to have before anybody in this town will ever see three hundred or four hundred new houses. We're trying to make a natural transition. There's almost no inventory in Battle Mountain. If somebody wants to build a new home, good luck. Go buy something today. Take a briefcase full of money and walk around and find yourself a lot. We're trying to put some product on the market for the Battle Mountain residents that could possibly pick up a lot at a better price point than what's out there now, and we're out there now, and get a home. And, you know, I always try and explain that anything that this board puts on us, we have no options but to pass it on to the buyer. Sooner or later, there's just not enough money. The buyers can't buy. We have no growth. If you... If we all wait for subdivisions, there's going to be no property on the market this summer. I don't think you could walk around with a briefcase and get a lot. We're going to be out of inventory. We're trying to make it simple, not trying to get away or get out of anything. I would never do a one acre project with curb gutter. I've never seen one. Curb gutter, sidewalk, sewer, water. I don't even know where you would go to find one. It's, you know, it just doesn't happen. And not everybody wants a two and a half, a five, or a twenty. The little one acre ranchettes is a nice transition headed towards Round Mountain, which is going to have commercial, R1, some A1. It transitions all the way from the back to the front.
Yeah, I'm not sure what map you keep showing there.
I know. I understand.
We don't have it, yeah.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. It was, like I said, the planning had that...
You're teasing me with it a little bit.
They had the planning, had the opportunity to have this map, because it was on the agenda.
Okay. So we have some more public comment. At least if you have one.
Yeah, I do. I don't know if Kathy's comment was eloquent or not, but I'm Joe that lives out there too, and I have several parcels out there. I have never seen this gentleman build something or do a project that was just to make money, let me tell you. Everybody's here to make money. I'm here to make money. Everyone's here to make money. But he's a responsible builder. He's proved it over here. He took a subdivision over here that was garbage, that someone left for years, and he made taxable homes, which of course are on city water, which is great, and built my home, which at that time was very reasonable compared to what other builders would have built it for. So I'm just going to say that Todd and I own several lots out there. And if he gets sixty septics before me, well, then, too bad for me, huh? That's my problem for fucking being slow. Excuse my French. But anyways, that's my problem for being slow. That's his business. And business is business. So I just want to give a point here that he's not here just to make money, Ms. Ancho. He is a responsible builder. He's been responsible. He's probably given this county more tax base in homes than Echo Bay or any of them ever did. They put all this in here, and it's all mobile homes, and they're hard to sell. They're hard to insure now. Stick built homes, bring tax base, and you can insure them a lot easier. So that's my duce. So...
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Emerald, did you have public comment?
Yes, I have. I am Emerald Campbell. I am a resident out there. I own thirty acres. I am A3. I know some of you have got away with getting the two and a half near me, a marijuana grow across the street from me. And I know a lot of people out there haven't been able to make it here, but don't want the one acres right behind our houses. We bought Ag. I want to stay Ag. Marbles want to stay Ag. They run cattle, horses. I've got a rancher here that will expand out there. And when you bring in subdivision, we have sounds. We've got smells. We bring in the bugs. What next? When we've got subdivisions coming in, and they want to take us to court because of our animals? And it's just, where does it end? It's... I mean, I don't want that behind me. I don't... I bought Ag. I want to stay Ag. I've got a business with Ag, and I would like to live comfortably without worrying about what the neighbor's going to say.
Got you.
All right. And along with that, I'm sure you heard what Bert had mentioned. Everybody discussing this project, pretty much just in conversation, is talking about going a lot higher density than what we're putting in.
But this is spot zoning at the finest.
Oh, no.
Yes, you're going right in between five acres into agriculture acres.
We go back to twenty, all the way past twenty seconds. There's A1 out there. There's A3. There's A5.
I know. They've got away with it.
I'm not trying to get away with it. We're transitioning towards Round Mountain, too. I'm just telling you the way I feel. I'm not trying to get away with it.
We've got an A3 right there at the corner of Round Mountain.
Which one?
We've got Mike Marvel's right there at the corner of Round Mountain.
And Mr. Marvel was at the last meeting.
He was, yes.
And we talked to him. Yeah, and I'm...
And he doesn't want to be surrounded by A1s.
Well, the problem is, is he's going to be surrounded by law owners. This property on the front of Round Mountain is going to be commercial.
It's native lands on the other side. And how would it be commercial? They can't get some of their stuff rolling now from years ago.
I'm just saying that in natural progression, as a community grows, you go into any town, and you look at, you know, where the high school is, and then you look at...
I think that it should just stay A2s, five acres.
Guys, I think we got the point here.
Yeah, I agree.
Just question to the board, so we can understand the facts.
Sure.
I do appreciate the public comment. Emerald, did you have any more?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Lon, did you have something?
Yes, I'm here to echo what Emerald said. I also own a large bunch of property out there. It is owned for five acre parcels. And I've talked to several of the people that live out there, and I think mine may be a little more west of his. But I do border this property there. The people that I've talked to, they moved out there for a reason. They moved out there to get the five acres, so they didn't have an influx of people next to them, as we know. And my comment on it, I would like to see it stay five acres.
Okay. Right. And then, I guess, does any other commissioners have any questions or comments on the subject? Yes, sir. One second, Kirk. We have public comment.
Oh, sure. Okay.
John Davis, for the record. I don't have a dog in this fight. I just, outside looking in. If his map is truly saying that they're progressing from five to two and a half to ones, that's true. That's a natural progression. I see wanting to build out the entire project, or getting it with a partnership, if you will, with the county to get... To move forward, to get it in. One acre lots, I probably would side with Mr. Johnson that that's tough to do with curb gutter sidewalk on one acre lots. Yours out by the golf course, I don't want that. That's all... No curb gutter sidewalk. It's the wrong atmosphere. That probably would have been... We need to pick an area on where you can do that and do a master plan. If the county put that water out there to spur growth, who in their right mind that face value would hook up to city water with a five acre parcel? Where is the county seeing the benefit in putting that line in there if they weren't anticipating smaller lots to hook up to that city water? As long as you have city water and all these lots are on city water, there's... And I'm no engineer, but it seems to me that there's... As long as your densities on the septics are null and void, because you're hooked up to city water, you're not... You don't have a problem with the densities to a certain point, I guess. I'm no engineer. I don't know. But if what he's stating is true, I don't know. I come to the dance late, so I don't know. But if they're going to build it, it seems like it's a natural progression for the board to really consider. Does it need to be a partnership with the county? So if it sounds to me like the county wants to do a little more faster, maybe it needs to be like, I think you mentioned earlier, Bert, you know, and then the county gets their money back upfront. But it's, in my opinion, outside looking in, coming late, it's probably a good project for what the infrastructure that the county has spent putting in out there.
Well, that's my point exactly.
That's a ton of money on water that the county has spent. And at five acres, I don't see the return on that. You got a water line that goes nowhere, doing nothing. Zero return on it for the county. So that's...
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
I would like to just speak to that just slightly, because I agree with ninety-eight percent of what John said, but...
Well, Bert, do you want to hear the other two percent?
Yeah, here's the two percent. But the two cents is that we're speaking of the perimeter of that. This is a really big overlay for a zone change. Not just the perimeter where our water and where our utilities are. And the smaller they go on our utility, the better for our utility.
Right.
It's a benefit. But it's... And it is in the progression. Some of that is true. There is a progression from... That goes from Marvel Ranch there on out down Yellow Brick, where it's two and a half, and then it comes. But as where it is not a progression, is when you start getting out towards like Emerald's house. When, you know, the further... When you, you know, the, the further you head towards Allen Road, you get bigger parcels. And that's where, that's where some of that doesn't quite, so there's, there's a mix of, of two things here going on. Yes, we want to hook as many on our sewer and water that we can out there, where we can. But this project, or a zone change, I should say, has a huge overlay that does not have our water and sewer going to it. It goes around the perimeter of it, but it doesn't go through the middle of it or anywhere to it. So there's, so there's some, so there's a little bit of both going on here.
Bert, there's a, there's another map that you have now that we're trying to get three, you should have this map. There's three one acre parcels on there. Bert, your water is stubbed right down in the middle of Wizard Way, right now.
Oh, I, I agree, it is stubbed down.
Okay, so my point is, is that on the A1, one acres, we're hooking up to your water. We're never going to hook up to your sewer, okay? Doesn't make any sense. There's always a workaround on the septic. And I, you know, I'm not trying, I'm not some great big builder developer, but I've developed in almost every county that you can think of between here and California. I've done it for 40 years, and I've been all over the place. I've just never seen a situation where someone wants to not give us approval because they're saving septics for Joe.
I don't know that, I don't know that we're recommending it all just based on the septic.
What happens? Let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question.
So, and this is for the commission, not for debate.
I can only have one guy talk there at a time, so let Bert finish.
Oh, go ahead, Bert.
No, no, so I, I, and I'm not here to, to debate with you.
No, I understand.
I'm just here to, and/or to be in opposition. Like I told you at the planning commission, if you wanted to put 100 homes around my property, you would not hear me combat it one bit until some of that overflowed my fences. Outside of that, I would be there supporting it. I, I am for my kids living next door to me or somebody else's kids living next door because that's what we need in this community.
Sure.
I support that. The, the concern that I'm trying to express to the commission is that we aren't just doing a, a rezone along areas that then we can later come back and then rezone and build into. We're doing a blanket rezone with no idea what's to come. And, and that can be, and that can be dangerous.
Let me, and let me ask, what happens if we cut this A1 down?
Well, that was my point.
If we make the A1 a smaller, you know, we start on, on Yellow Brick and cut the A1 down, and on the balance of it, we wait for the master plan and see what you, you guys have on the master plan.
When, when we met with, with Ms. Kim, that was, that was one of our recommendations. How can, how can we partner on this and, and make this to where, where we wouldn't be in here doing exactly what we're doing today?
Where, where would you feel comfortable? How many acres would you feel comfortable of our A1?
Why, I mean.
Because we're open, we're not, we're not.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, is why wouldn't the development follow the infrastructure that the county has put in and the, the stuff where it's not, we leave it alone at this time until we do finish up the master plan?
You've got that map, okay? And like I say, water is stubbed into Wizard Way right now. It's already there.
Let me find, let me find.
And we've got actually water pits, I believe, David, on two of the lots already. It's not, not only stubbed, there's water pits there.
Yeah, no, I'm, that's not the point that I'm arguing. The point that I'm arguing is, is the out in the middle there that, that is so open that you're just doing the, the whole rezone overlay.
Well, I'm willing, like I say, we're totally willing to cut our A1 down. I just don't know what would be acceptable to the board or to you or the county. Cut, it's 70 acres, do we cut it down to 20 acres? Is that something that would be acceptable? Cut our A1 down to, you know, we understand there's some new zoning coming out of the master plan, maybe we just take 20 acres. We do the A1 and we look for direction on the balance of it out of the master plan. What, does anybody have a?
I mean, honestly, that's why we have a planning commission, so they can hear these things better, and that's what they do 100% of the time, right? It's like, we're hearing it because they were unable to make a decision, and we're trying to see the facts to make sure that we're, that we can make a responsible decision. And it's just, I still, I mean, things don't add up 100%. Like what you're proposing would make more sense to me.
Okay.
How much, I don't know. The formality of what we need to do, does it need to go back to the planning commission? I don't know.
Well, it's their application. You know, we don't, we don't make that determination. It's your application and how, you know, how you guys choose to proceed with your application is entirely up to you. Our recommendations are, are based off of your application. And when, when we'd met with Kim, the, the recommendation was, hey, can we, can we tone this back a little bit to where it's not so a feeling of overreach, so to speak? And, and make something where you guys can develop and you guys can continue progressing forward as we work, as we work kind of that way. But, but the, the blanket overlay on it is just, it's a lot.
I'm all in. We're, we're open. We're actually on, I believe Shelby, we're on the agenda for the 17th, right? We could go back and, the only thing I'm trying to get a feel for is like you say, instead of us going back and forth, where would the comfort level be for the A1? 20 acres? We're happy to redrop, come back to you for 20 acres of A1 and look at the new master plan on the balance. Truly, we don't have a problem.
Okay, is there a response? I have public comment if there's none. Yes, sir.
Mike Craig for the record. I'm kind of speaking here for Mike Marvel on behalf of, he can't be here, he's at a doctor's appointment. And I talked with him last night over kind of where their property is, and we kind of went over some of this stuff. I know some of this location's back behind. Talking with Mike and Teresa, they're kind of, with the five acre parcels is kind of where they're comfortable with. Just kind of throwing that out there, I know some of these meetings are coming about, but we're, they're not here to speak. Just kind of speaking for them on what surrounds their property and kind of what they're comfortable with. And they're the minimum of five acres on that behalf.
I talked to Mr. and Mrs. Marvel at the meeting.
I know that.
Several times. And what the conclusion, or what came out of the meeting, and I asked him several times if he was okay not to do anything other than to get direction. You know, he's concerned about the kids playing on his haystack.
Correct.
I can't quite help him there. He's going to have to get the kids off the haystack himself.
No, one thing to take consideration is when they bring in cattle, they have bulls, like he has bulls over there right now, he can't afford kids coming in there and getting with them, the bulls, the range bulls, there's cattle. They're talking, putting pivot back in, if they start farming, you get bees coming in, and that's just potential for kids. So just like all the other zoning in these surrounding areas and kind of what's out there, five acres is kind of, you know, a standard on kind of some of this. That's their proposal on this and their input on it. On the 17th meeting, he'll be there to speak at that one.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So I'm just kind of speaking on behalf of this one with this deal.
Were you at the meeting?
No, but.
Okay, well, can I, can I just briefly tell you what the discussion was?
I know what happened, but yeah.
Yeah, he, he agreed, he said if, because we had R4 on the corner on Round Mountain, okay? And we, that was for apartments. And Mr. Marvel wasn't in favor of the R4 because there would be too many kids running around. And we said, we're good neighbors. What do you, you know, what do you want us to do? The chairman made a, a mention that, what about putting R1 there? We said, we're willing to talk about it. There was a little bit of a discussion. We agreed to it. I believe Bill got some type of a, a agreement between the county and us that said, we're going to make the changes and we're going to come back. We've done that, and that was according to the conversation with Mr. Marvel. We weren't trying to go around him or anything. We're wide open. We said, what do you want? He thought the R1 was okay. So why, why would this parcel, who isn't even near his place, is down the street and across the street, have an issue with five acres when he thought R1 was okay right on the corner? And I'm, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just.
Well, you are trying to argue, but with the same token is.
Maybe a little bit.
Yeah, I can too, I know an argument. But anyways, with that being said, I just spoke with him last night, went over with all this stuff, and like I said, this is back behind him.
Yeah.
So that is understandable, but if you're trying to make a smaller parcel there, most likely you're going to try making it next to him smaller. I'm just telling you right now what they're in favor for, speaking with him and Teresa last night, I was there for a couple hours.
Right.
And going over the papers, the paper that they got in the mail yesterday, that they're in favor of the five acres. And that's, that's a legit deal out there. Just wait, battle mounds built, five acres is what they're representing. And I think Ron and all them can contest all that stuff too, because they got property out there as well. But that's just me speaking for him. He will speak for himself, and I will be at the next meeting with him because just as representative with him.
Sure.
As far as that goes.
And I did not argue with Mr. Marvel.
I understand you.
All right, so that's good, guys, that's good. We got the point, and thank you for your testimony from Mr. Marvel, and thank you. Do you have public comment?
Hey, I'm Bob Kester. For the record, I live on the corner of 635 and, or 26th Street and Yellow Brick, across the street from Kathy there. And I bought my lot from David, and Kurt built my garage, did a great job.
Thank you.
It was nice working with these folks, but I moved out there, I don't know, 10, 12 years ago on the premise that it was going to be five acre lots all around it. Now we got the two acre lots, and the two acre lots are about this way, and they're about that long. They're stacked up right, you know, along, so it looks like they're smaller than the two and a half acre lots to me, you know? I moved out there to get away from the density. And as per selfish reasons of my own, on my own behalf, I would like the zoning to remain the way it is. That's all I got, thank you.
So something, something everybody should consider is that, you know, when you get bigger lots, you'll see it in Hilltop, and I don't mean to insult anybody from Hilltop, but without water rights, you get bigger lots, people don't take care of them. And they end up, they end up storing a lot of equipment and vehicles and, and things that we had public comment on earlier about. When you get smaller lots, you get better cared for lots, people that take care of their fences, their lawns, their, it becomes a little bit more conducive to the, you know, a lot of people's lifestyle around here when they want to look over and not see three barbecues on their neighbor's deck and 12 parked cars out front. So with that, I, I, I just want to make sure that that's, you know, considered. We, we keep big lots. We also, we're encouraging the same kind of growth and the problems that we have on the other side of our community because we don't have the water rights. We don't have the, the things that can maintain them bigger lots to keep a more, you know, up kept piece of property. I just think that from the county's side of this and our, and our staff report, it was the oversweeping ask on the, on the zone change where we had the issue.
And I, I appreciate you brought that up because I've, I've kind of, in, in the planning meeting, I was trying to share with the planners that everybody can see, if you start with five acres, they're not so pretty. And I'm not talking to everybody's. The two and a halves are a little more prettier. But when you get in a natural transition of one acres, two and a halves, fives, twenties, your one acre is almost always going to have landscaping, it's going to have some fencing, it's going to look nice. And I don't have to tell you that, you can go out and look at the one acres and then go look at the two and a half and fives. Better for the county, you get more taxes. It's just plain better all the way around, truly.
Okay, so I think we've heard, is there any, first off, is there any other comment or concerns? Okay, so I think we've heard it. I think, I think I've expressed my concerns. And I, it sounds to me like there's some willingness maybe to work with staff to, you have a better idea, Kurt, of something that we could actually join forces on to achieve out there.
Absolutely.
So maybe we just need to move down that road and then, and just see where we go from then, rather than.
You bet, I think staff would be happy to.
Okay?
Good.
Commissioners, any?
But a motion has been made, doesn't it, to send this back down to the planning commission?
I don't know. Bill?
Well, you just said if nothing's done, then it passes, correct?
Correct.
First and foremost, I would make, I would suggest a motion to either approve or to disapprove. If you make a motion to disapprove, keep in mind that that doesn't mean never.
No, exactly.
Means not today.
Right.
But if you don't do anything, this gets approved.
In 45 days, because that would waste something like that.
Well, the days have already clicked by.
Okay, that's, that's, yeah, that's understood, thanks.
So that's where we're at, so.
Okay, understood.
Can I, can I just ask one more question? Shelby, we're on the agenda for the 17th, right?
Yes.
So we're, we can be back in front of planning, and we'll get you a new map right away on cutting the A1 down to whatever, 20 acres? And is that something, Shelby, that you think is?
The only problem with that is we've already sent out public hearing notices that specify the whole parcel.
Correct.
And the little one down below. So to change it at this point, we could ask Bill if we could do that or not. I'm not sure if we can do that at this point.
There's a, there's a problem in terms of whether or not that public hearing is actually necessary, so. We've been being around the bush, but my, first off, you can tell that a lot more went on. Several people were at that planning commission meeting. I would say that it was only about, you know, some of the claims that it made. It was everything you heard here today and then some, and more people protesting, or I shouldn't say more, but different people. Not everybody that was there is here today. I believe that from talking with various people in this, it looks to me like some kind of a project can be done on this property and can be done soon on this property. If you go forward with this as it is, I'm a little concerned, it's early in the, in things, and by itself it wouldn't be, but I'm a little concerned that we would be heading in the direction of spot zoning, because we are doing a master plan. Well, what, what are you doing here? This is rezone this, and it's just one spot. It's coming up. And if we keep going that route, as was mentioned by Kathy and others, what are we doing with this redoing of the master plan? So those are concerns that I think need to be addressed, but I want to emphasize that saying no to the project today, or to the zone change today, rather, does not say no to the project.
Right, I think that's clear. Thank you, Bill.
The one thing I wanted to say is Bill and I have had a discussion, both in the meeting and out of the meeting, and my understanding, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, that you said the spot zoning on this project at this time could go either way. That's what you said in the actual public meeting. You, you told the chairman that he could vote either way on the spot zoning, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, but it's, it's starting to head in that direction, and I'm concerned that we could end up with a problem there. It won't be with just this one action. But that's why I raised it. It can become a problem.
Okay, I'm going to allow for one more comment, and then we're going to wrap this baby up.
Yep, I wanted to address the spot zoning. Spot zoning isn't just about density, but it's also about use. The use A, as an A1 zone does not, is, is a similar use to adjoining properties, so it is, it is similar. Also, there is other A1 beyond this that is already in existence. So it is, it is truly not spot zoning. It is a natural transition closer to town, higher density, closer to city center, town center versus what's beyond it. So there is, there is no spot zoning on this.
Okay, thank you, Kim, for that presentation, that helped. Okay, so I'm going to hear a motion. So is there a motion?
Well, make a motion that this time we denied the zone change application, 24-0008.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. And this, and then we're encouraging Mr. Johnson to get with staff to work up with something that more fits the concerns and needs of what this commission has. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take, uh, we're just going to take a ten minute break. Are we recording?
This conference will now be recorded.
And we'll continue with one point three, review consideration of possible actions to approve this approved parcel map number twenty four zero zero one zero filed by Emerald Land Company LLC to divide APN zero one zero dash zero two zero dash twenty seven, a seventy point one five acre parcel into three one acre parcels and a sixty seven point one five acre remainder parcel within a proposed A1. One road approximately eight hundred seventy-two feet east of the intersection of Yellow Brick Road on Twenty Sixth Street, Battle Mountain Vada. This was considered at the March twenty twenty four planning commission meeting, which they took no action on.
Morning, Commissioners. Shelby again for the record. Um, so this is the parcel map that goes along with the zone change that we heard at the, on the previous item that you denied.
Right.
So I will leave that action up to you.
So we're just going to table that item.
We can't table it. We have to just, we don't bother just to vote, uh, um...
Do we need to have a motion to be in denial of it or what do we do on that?
Yeah, my understanding is it needs to be a denial as well.
Okay, that does?
Uh, make a motion that denies a, deny the parcel map two four dash zero zero one L.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
So I need to go through, do I need to go through and since he's already read all that in, do I need to go through each one of those? Um, or just that?
No, I think I, I read it, I read it in and then you made a motion. So then we'll continue with one point four, review consideration of possible actions to approve this approved request to combine parcels and approve subdivision number twenty four zero zero five filed by Stuart Nicholas Nichols to combine APN zero zero three dash one seven one dash oh seven and zero zero three dash one seven one dash one seven into one forty-one thousand seventy-seventh square foot parcel within an R1 single family residential zoning district. The subject properties are located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Kingston Road, Kingston Canyon Road and Gold Knob Road, Kingston, Nevada. This was approved at the twenty, at the March twenty twenty four planning commission meeting with the following conditions. One map is to be reported with the Lander County Reporter's Office within one year of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Um, so this item, we've heard this before. Uh, Mr. Nichols came to us to combine two of his parcels. Uh, that was approved. We then found out that, uh, a large portion of that parcel was located in the floodway, which is unbuildable. Um, so now he's coming to us asking to combine those two and with a third. Um, so now he has a buildable lot to, uh, build a, build a home in Kingston.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, is there any public concerns or comments on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Oh, I think we ultimately approve. Um, this, I don't know how to say that. Um, this approved the combining of the lots.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into one point six.
One point five.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's one point six, right?
One point five.
Oh, no, sorry. One point five. Gosh. Uh, review consideration of possible action to approve disapproved division of land into large parcels, number twenty four zero zero seven filed by Nevada Gold Mines LLC and Hospat Holdings Company to divide APN zero one zero dash five one zero dash one three, a six hundred and forty acre parcel into two three hundred and twenty acre parcels located in section thirteen township thirty-one North Range forty-seven East. This was approved at the March twenty twenty four planning commission meeting with the following conditions. One, division of land into large parcels to be reported with the Lander County Reporter's Office within one year, um, of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Um, so this map, uh, from my understanding, a portion of this large property was deeded over to Nevada Gold Mines. Um, so now they're going back to record the map that actually creates those parcels to clean up the title.
Okay. Any questions?
I stand for.
Okay.
His vote, this is my employer.
Okay. Any public comment or concerns? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we have approved the division of land into large parcels, number twenty four dash zero 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 seven filed by Nevada Gold Mines LLC, Hospat Holdings Company to divide APN zero one zero five ten dash thirteen, a six hundred and forty acre parcel into two to three hundred and twenty acre parcels located in the section thirteen township thirty-one North Range forty-seven East and was approved by the March twenty twenty four planning commission.
Okay, well, I have a, a motion in a second. A motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Okay, so now we'll move into one point six, update and information only from Nevada Gold Mines regarding information and permitting on the Robertson mine project.
I stand for any discussion on the next two items. This is my employer.
We're good. All right, we're good.
Good morning. I'm Tamara Baker, permitting manager from Nevada Gold Mines.
And Maggie Corneri, permitting specialist for Nevada Gold Mines.
I think that there's a presentation that we shared previously. No, that's the BLMs, I believe. Did you, you shared it electronically, okay, to someone?
I have this.
I don't believe we have a thumb drive. We only print, we did a printed version.
I have it on my thumb drive. It like, it took a minute to go grab it real quick.
I thought, yeah, I thought we sent it electronically to...
You want to go grab it and then she can keep us entertained until you get back?
No, the keys are in my backpack, pocket.
Sorry, guys. I just assumed it would be.
Me too. I'm sorry.
No worries.
It's, I don't know if it's in your packet.
That could be just lapse in communication, not entirely on you guys' part.
Okay. I want you to be able to see the pictures and not just hear my voice.
We like pictures.
Okay.
I, I do believe that some of the pictures are in your backup, but I, I don't want to be up on the TV.
I mean, I can probably do it without the pictures. Would you, do you guys have a preference?
It doesn't matter if you want to start and we can, you can start talking about it and when she gets back, we can jump into that.
Okay.
I like pictures, but I don't want to stop you, so.
Okay. They're, they're only for entertainment purposes, so I'll just, I'll just talk to it. So, um, we would like to give you an update on three of our projects. So first it's Gold Rush, then a really high level on Robertson because the BLM is here and they're going to dive into a bit more detail with pictures. And then we'll talk about Long Canyon. So the first one's the Gold Rush project. It was approved on December eighth and we started construction on December eighth. This project is located to the east of our existing Cortez facilities. Some of the work that we've done thus far are rapid infiltration basins, which hold the dewatering water that we pull out of the ground and let it infiltrate back into the aquifer. We've also built a road in Horse Canyon, a vent raise and some dewatering wells. At our mining area, we've expanded our portal pad and put in a power line. Right now we're paused because of sage grouse leaching season. So as soon as that season ends, um, in June, we'll bring our contractor back and they'll continue building the mine project. Some of the community impacts, it's a reminder that it's a twenty-four year mine life. There'll be five hundred and seventy new jobs during operations. One billion to bring the project into production that NGM will spend. Um, we expect to, um, pay three hundred and twenty-six million in net proceeds tax and a hundred and forty-two million in the gold and silver excise tax for education under AB four ninety-five. So I'm on Robertson. One more. There we go. You want to stay there or just give me?
Those numbers you just stated, was that for Gold Rush or for Robertson?
That's for Gold Rush. Okay, so the Robertson project, like I mentioned before, the BLM is also going to present on this, so I'll be very brief. Um, it's a fifteen year mine life that includes mining, heap leaching and reclamation. There'll be three open pits, a heap leach pad, a gravel borrow area, typical mining facility, um, with growth media stockpiles, haul roads, access roads. It does require dewatering of one of our pits at six hundred and twenty-five gallons per minute. And just to compare that to the, the Cortez side, which is seven thousand gallons per minute, the six hundred and twenty-five gallons will be used, um, in our process facility. We'll process some of the material, um, on the site through the heap leach pad and then we'll haul the rest to the south, um, to our connecting mill and pipeline facility. Yeah. And then just a little bit of history. Um, the area has been mined since nineteen sixty-nine, or eighteen sixty-nine, sorry, it's very old. Um, the specific Robertson area was first mined in nineteen oh five and there was, the first environmental assessment was done in nineteen eighty-six. There are existing disturbances there. There are four small pits, two waste rock dumps and, um, access roads. Currently we're doing exploration there. It, it did go into closure in two thousand and three. Um, it changed hands a few times. There was an environmental assessment that was done in two thousand and ten. Barrick purchased the project in two thousand and seventeen and it became part of NGM in twenty, twenty nineteen. Some of the resources that we're managing there are surface and groundwater. So extensive studies have been done on how dewatering from the current mine as well as, um, the Robertson mine are impacting surface and groundwater. And we have mitigation plans. We have the, um, the interim mitigation plan that's for groundwater and then the contingency mitigation plan that's for surface waters. We also are managing abandoned mine lands, like the, like we just discussed, all of that history of, um, historic mining has left many abandoned mine lands. So we have a project to close some of those areas for safety and for wildlife concerns. Um, we also have sage grouse habitat there. We have mitigations, um, through our bank enabling agreement and the Nevada Conservation Credit System. We also have agreed to put up berms to decrease our noise to those sage grouse lecks during certain times of the year and also decrease the number of haul trucks that drive by these, um, sage grouse leaching areas. And then it's also golden eagle habitat. So we have four nests that comprise one territory. Um, we are applying for a permit with the Fish and Wildlife Service, um, for incidental disturbance to those. But there's also a nest within the gold pan pit that we will have to remove. So that's another permit with the Fish and Wildlife Service. And then some of the benefits of Robertson. Um, we expect a hundred and fifty employees during construction, four hundred and fifty employees during operations, which leads to more spending on goods and services, which supports more jobs and businesses in the area. Um, some of the costs for exploration and permitting, twenty-four million spent on exploration activities to date and seven point two million budgeted for permitting and environmental studies. And then in taxes, we expect to spend a hundred and forty-six, um, in the local projected taxes, a hundred and forty-six million. And then thirty million in the net proceeds tax. The project schedule, which the BLM will dive into a bit more. The draft EIS went out for public comment on March fifteenth. There's a forty-five day comment period. Um, they held their, um, public meetings on April first and April second in Crescent Valley and remotely. NGM will also be holding, um, an open house meeting on the seventeenth in Crescent Valley in the evening. Um, this is a time to get the public's input on any impacts that we may have not seen. Also to get more information on those impacts and deep dive with the specialists from NGM. So everyone is welcome to attend. Um, and it's also, this public comment period is also an opportunity to provide letters of support. Um, the BLM schedule does say that the, um, EIS record of decision will be published in Q four, so this year. Um, know though that there could be delays depending on what kinds of comments we get and, and things like that. So you can see the rest of the schedule after the draft period. And then lastly, Long Canyon, which is located in Elko County on the east side of the state. We're continuing to, um, run, uh, process, uh, run cyanide through the heap leach facility, which you can see in the foreground. So we're still collecting gold off of that facility. We expect to do that through two thousand and twenty-five. We're doing reclamation while that's happening, so reclamation of waste rock dumps, um, exploration pads and roads. Um, right now there's fourteen people employed and it's, we call the site in care and maintenance.
Lastly, hello, my name's Shawna Adams. I'm a community investment development specialist with Nevada Gold Mines. Um, what I'm showing you here is the footprint of all of our communities where we work. And in two thousand and twenty-three, we have provided three point one billion in community investments. And that's broken down by our employee giving program, the Heritage Fund, our community development committees that are based in Humboldt, Lander and Elko County, as well as our community investment committees that are site based. Also, if you look over to the left bottom of the picture, that is also compiling the three hundred and forty-seven million in taxes, the one point two billion in personnel costs, our goods and services purchased in Nevada at one point five billion. And then, um, it's a total spend of eighteen point nine in our social investments. This year in two thousand and twenty-four, that number has increased. We're looking at twenty-one million to spend socially amongst our communities.
Great presentation. Thank you, guys. Do you have any questions, board? Anybody in the public have any questions?
I got one.
Okay.
Uh, the Robertson project out here, is that going to affect the county road that runs through the middle Cortez?
Those are opposite side of the mountain.
Yeah, I was thinking for the road a little bit.
Yeah, um, can you go back to the, the very first slide? Um, one more. So you can see where the Cortez district is in Gold Rush, so the county road goes through it this way. Um, it's just on the, what is it, west side of, um, the Crescent Valley road.
Okay.
So it's just off the road, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So go to one point seven, update and information only from John Shurvey regarding Nevada Gold Mines Robertson mine project.
Chairman, I'll abstain from any discussion.
Okay. Morning, John.
Morning, Commissioners. Do you have a hard copy if you guys want the PowerPoint?
Um, yeah, I, I don't think I, well, you do have it.
I didn't have anything in this.
But I'll take a paper copy. Yes, please. Yeah, I'm a paper guy. I'm having a hard time.
Jane, come here.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Shurvey. I'm the field manager for the Mountain Lewis Field Office out of the Battle Mountain District.
I'm Gene Gilset, project manager for the Robertson mine project.
I wanted to provide an update, uh, to the county on a key milestone here with this project. That's entirely, uh, it is in Lander County. What governs our work for, uh, the BLM is NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. And that, that disco, that mandate is for the BLM to disclose, uh, some key aspects. Uh, one is the, the project itself, the proposed action. Uh, have a discussion on the affected environment. Have a discussion on the environmental consequences or environmental impacts. And then a discussion on the cumulative impacts where it looks at a broader scale on other, uh, other, um, activities that are in the area. So an EIS is a, a very detailed, in-depth environmental analysis. And this is certainly an EIS level project. Um, one of the newer components of this, uh, the NEPA process, uh, for this project has been the Lander County's participation in this. And we encourage that and I think it's worked really well, uh, with having, um, your, your specialist Pam, uh, participate in this. She's, uh, she's very, uh, active and, uh, raises a lot of good questions. Um, so, uh, just a brief overview and then of course we'll get into any, uh, detailed questions that, uh, that you want. Um, as stated earlier, there, there'll be some repeat from what you heard from Nevada Gold Mines. But this is a, a favorable project to us because it has been in an area that's stated been mined since the eighteen sixties. Uh, the last time it was active was in the late nineteen eighties. And, uh, since then, the agency has adapted more stringent, uh, reclamation standards. So going into some of these old facilities is always a, a benefit, uh, to up the, uh, reclamation that has previously been done. If you want to go to the next state, uh, so the, what you've already seen, this is just a, a general layout of the, of the project and its location. So what you've already seen, this is just a general layout of the project and its location. Some of the acres we're talking about include about 4,300 acres. Most of it is public land, about 180 acres are on patented private land. What we've done to date so far is a, we've worked a number of years doing baseline environmental analyses, and that normally takes, you know, one to two years, and it could be longer depending on the proponent. Nevada Gold Mines has done a few of these before, so they're pretty prepared when we get into these baseline analyses. So prior to the, what you see on there is that first bullet item, the notice of intent, we've already gone through a lot of environmental analysis and studies. So when we come to that NOI stage, we're hitting the public for the first time with a very well-thought-out project that's already taken a hard look at resource conflicts. So we get to that point, and we've got a good handle on what that project looks like, and the public has got a lot more information right at the beginning stages of the NEPA process. The notice of intent, we're also involved, what happens at the notice of intent timeframe are public scoping meetings, and so that's the first stage where the public can weigh in. And we got a number, of course, we've got some public scoping comments, and then now those were helped, we used those to help develop the draft environmental impact statement, which is where we are right now. Next slide. We don't need to get into a lot of this, it was already discussed earlier. They're pretty much just going into existing areas, existing pits and deepening the pits within that Robertson project. It's your heap leach, utilize also some of the existing Cortez infrastructure, and then what was stated earlier, the timeframe here, 12 years, and taking into account additional time for reclamation. This is a little different map than what you saw previously, and this provides some overview. The one on the left provides some overview on what's already out there. There's a lot of these polygons, each color represents a different BLM jurisdictional boundary for the mine. The yellow, the big yellow, can you outline that? You have a mouse?
Sure.
Yeah, so the yellow, all the yellow is the existing Cortez Hills project, which has certainly been going on since the mid 90s and has expanded quite a bit now. What's not on this map is just to the right is the Gold Rush project that Nevada Gold Mines talked about, and that's a separate project, it's just not on here. And then up to the left, the green and that gold-colored polygon, that's the focus of the Robertson project. There's an existing exploration project, which is the green polygon. This project, the Robertson project, will incorporate components of existing approved plans of operation. And then that's what you see on the right is that blue, which would be the, upon approval, if it gets approved certainly, would be that blue polygon. And this new map is just a scaled-in version of the project area, the three pits there with that gold-colored, the gold pan pit, that's the one that's got an anticipated pit lake, a little under 300 feet deep. The porphyry pit and the Altenberg pit are gonna, will not have a pit lake in them. The porphyry pit will have a little bit of a backfill to avoid a pit lake. Then you've got the waste rock in the brown, the heap leach facility, and then between those are some more of the processing facilities. And these are some of the, we certainly, these aren't all the resources we look at, but these are some of the key ones. And as mentioned, some of the wildlife we're talking about impacts that have been discussed have been the sage grouse. Nevada Gold Mines has their bank enabling agreement, which was approved under the sage grouse plan in 2015, so they've been utilizing that for a lot of their projects to offset disturbing, mining disturbance and doing habitat improvement elsewhere. They also are engaged with the Endow and the Sage Grouse, what's that called?
SET?
The SET, yes. Sage Grouse Ecosystem Technical Team, which administers the debits and credits impacts to the sage grouse habitat, and so they'll be utilizing that as well. And then the ego permits are being processed with Fish and Wildlife. Those are some of the key wildlife habitat impacts. Grazing, this is in the Keriko Lake allotment, and it's minimal impacts to the AUMs, about 200 AUMs, and that's well under 1% of the AUMs that are in that allotment. Like always, the biggest issues are water for us when we look at these projects. Surface and groundwater, but there's a lot that has already been learned from mining impacts in this area to groundwater resources and surface water resources. So what's been implemented or proposed to be implemented is what's already working for the Cortez area as far as monitoring goes and mitigation, and also we've got a long-term approach to mining nowadays. We've got mechanisms in place to handle impacts essentially into perpetuity. So if we get farther along in this permitting process, we'll be able to look at those longer-term impacts and provide some monitoring and mitigation plan for that as well. One of the biggest key water resources in this project, in the area, is in Indian Creek, and rightfully so, there's residents that live up in that area. What we've looked at through our modeling and predictive modeling is that the impacts to that Indian Creek are below the residents, the property rights owners out there, and we still do have mitigation planned for that. Some of the other components to an EIS analysis, we take a look at traffic, we look at cultural resources. One case here, we've got a grave, an old cemetery that's going to be avoided altogether. Air quality, impacts to air, visual and noise, you know, we take a hard look at that. So unless there's any questions, those are some of the key resource aspects that we look at.
Okay, thank you, John. Are there any questions from the board?
There, Ms. Helling?
Reached out and said, John, is there any permits for lithium mines or solar plants in Landmark County?
Yes, well, lithium, not in Landmark County. We've looked at small exploration projects over the years, we've gotten a few proposals to do some exploration for lithium, but there's just nothing in Landmark County that we're working on this lithium. It's, lithium is focused, for the most part, for the state. The big lithium interest is around Tonopah. And what was the other one?
Solar.
Oh, solar, yes, so solar, there's a number of solar applications that have been submitted to us, and those are down on really both sides of Austin, out in Big Smoky Valley and in Upper Reese River Valley. We've got a couple of them, but we're a ways off on those. They've got to go through a number of steps, and I can, you know, if that's of an interest to the Commission, I can provide another update on that at another time, but yeah, there has been some solar. That's specific to our district. Now, there are some what's called the Green Link North and Green Link West, those are major transmission lines that these solar companies are trying to tie into. And the Green Link North project runs, this is not our naming system, I think it's NV Energy's, the Green Link North project runs east-west, pretty much along Highway 50. And so that's where we're finding the, solar companies are looking for spots to tie into that major transmission line. And yeah, so some of those are in those areas I stated.
Okay, thank you, John. Is there any questions from the public?
We've got a couple more things, just a couple more slides. And then, and these are just to some of the, as far as the EIS and what NEPA looks at, we've got to look at alternatives in our NEPA analysis, and so these are a couple of alternatives that we look at right now at this stage. One's a partial backfill alternative, and then another one is just the no-action alternative, which is what would happen if, certainly if this project doesn't go through. And now the public comment phase can always trigger another analysis for us to take a look at. Right now, these are the, the proposed action is the plan of operations with Nevada Gold Mines submitted. We're looking at a partial backfill alternative where it just fills into the pits with a waste rock, and then the third alternative then would be the no-action alternative. And then this, this one just goes into some of the numbers we've already heard from Nevada Gold Mines as far as employment and the economic impact. And two, that last bullet I want to point out is that we do a lot of Native American coordination consultation with the tribes, so that's an ongoing effort that we're involved in, so that's still ongoing. And then this is just some of the key stakeholders that we've worked with. You know, a lot of state government, Endep, Endow certainly, and then we've been engaged in with, in our process, in our pre-NEPA work, we worked with the EPA, with Fish and Wildlife, and then all the other state agencies as well.
And John, I'd like to add on outreach, we have a new thing now that we provide at the front desk, which is a QR code. Anybody that's interested in these projects that are out for public comment or scoping, you can go in there and just take a picture of it with your phone, and it'll take you directly to the ePlanning website where all of the documents relevant to the project are available. So currently, we have multiple, which is in South Terbe and Robertson, those are available.
Thanks, Gene. Then this last slide is just a schedule. The draft EIS went out to the public on March 15th for 45-day public comment period, which will end April 29th, and then the anticipated, rest of the process with our anticipated approval Record of Decision beginning of October.
Thank you, Dylan. Appreciate the update. Any questions? Yes, Pam?
I just wanted to make clear, Pam Harrington for the rest, do you guys know me? Hi, John.
Hi, Pam.
So like John said, the public comment period ends on April 29th, and I've been developing our final comments for Landmark County, and as John also mentioned, there are impacts to domestic wells, and one groundwater well, I think it is, that's not a domestic well, so we need to get mitigation started on that. I would suggest that we meet like every week to try and put something together, because our master plan says that Landmark County opposes projects that impacts people's water rights for domestic wells. That's what the master plan reads, and that's where we're at right now. But there's a lot of examples on mitigation that's being done through Eureka County with NGM, and so I think we need to look at that and see if we can put together a good monitoring plan and mitigation that's in place, not wait 10 years down the road when there are impacts. That's what our comments are, our initial comments have said so far, and there's a few other comments as well, but I think the mitigation needs to start happening, have discussions routinely together so we can come up with something. And use Eureka, I mean, Jake provided me with a lot of examples that we could all look at for Landmark to have something like they have in place, because it's, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna be moving on.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open up 1.8 for discussion of possible actions to approve this proof in Nevada Division of Water Resources fiscal year 2024, 2025 groundwater basin budgets and adjustments for the following basis. A, Anel Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of $19,926.83. B, Smoky, Big Smoky Valley Northern Part Groundwater Basin in the amount of $927.43. C, Boulder Flat Groundwater Basin in the amount of $1,252.28. D, Buffalo Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of $2,611.28. E, Keriko Lake Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of $2,593.42. F, Clover's Area Groundwater Basin in amount of $14,743.71. G, Crescent Valley Groundwater Basin in an amount of $49,947.51. H, Toby Valley Groundwater Basin in an amount of $237.85. I, Lower Reese River Valley Groundwater Basin in an amount of $24,979.32. J, Middle Reese River Valley Groundwater Basin in an amount of $26,105.18. K, Upper Reese River Valley Groundwater Basin in an amount of $9,440.52. L, Whirlwind Valley Groundwater Basin in an amount of $25,987.33. M, Humboldt River Groundwater Basin in an amount of $30,961.28. And N, Kingston Creek Groundwater Basin in an amount of $3,593.75. Are there any questions? Okay, I'll hear your motion.
A motion to approve the Nevada Division of Water Resources fiscal year 24, 25 groundwater basin budgets and adjustments.
Okay.
Has read.
A second, Dave, motion and a second. I'll let Barrick say aye.
Aye.
Move to 1.9 for discussion of possible actions to approve, disapprove funding, the insurance in an amount not to exceed $1,283.17 for desert jackpot junkies to host barrel races at the Battle Mountain Rodeo Grounds for the dates of May 31st, 2024, June 1st, 2024, June 2nd, 2024, June 13th, 2024, June 27th, 2024, July 11th, 2024, July 18th, 2024, August 1st, 2024, August 15th, 2024, September 5th, 2024, and September 19th, 2024. So.
Could this fall under, or grants or things, was this, I've brought it before for us to?
In budget, no, this was not in budget. This would come out of this year's budget, well, a portion of it, and then a portion would come out of next year's, and that would be the 10,000 that we set aside for the miscellaneous that were during budget hearing. Okay, any other questions? Public have any comment, questions? Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just here for any answers or questions.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the funding for the insurance in the amount not to exceed $1,283.17 for desert jackpot junkies to host barrel races at the Battle Mountain Rodeo Grounds for the dates stated.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll let Barrick say aye.
Aye.
Okay, guys, there we go.
Thank you, guys.
So 1.10 for discussion of possible actions to approve the contract for the purchase of the vacant land on State Route 305 for the new firehouse in Battle Mountain in the amount of $177,000, and authorize the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners to sign the contract and all other documents necessary to close the transaction through Stewart Title. Good. Glad to see that's moving forward. You guys have any questions on that? The public have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the contract for purchase of the vacant land on State 305 for the new firehouse in Battle Mountain in the amount of $177,000 to authorize the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners to sign the contract with all the documents necessary to close the transaction through Stewart Title.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'll let Barrick say aye.
Aye.
Okay. 1.11 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the use of funds saved and remaining not in excess of $1,500,000 on the Safe Routes project to install additional sidewalks within Battle Mountain. sidewalks within Battle Mountain at the previous approved unit bid amount of not to exceed $9.60 per square foot from honeywell construction. Do you wish to have any questions? Donnie?
Good morning, Commissioner. This is from, savings from cutting back from a five-foot sidewalk going down to a four-foot sidewalk, and then by doing that, we didn't have to move a bunch of fences. So it was a substantial savings, and then there were some sidewalks, existing sidewalks we didn't have to replace. That was in decent enough shape that we decided to keep them, and a couple of homeowners had some really nice concrete work in front of their house, and we didn't want to disturb it, so.
And then where, so where are the sidewalks? Where are they going to be? Where are we working out on this?
We're working over on this side of town. We're just going to continue on working this way towards the, yeah. I got a question for, well, I guess I can ask him later.
Okay, is, commissioners have any questions? The public have any questions? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the funds saved and remaining not in excess of $1,500,000 on the Safe Routes project to install additional sidewalks within Battle Mountain at the previously approved amount, unit bid amount of not to exceed $9.60 per square foot from honeywell construction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into item 2.1 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the Lander County tentative budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025 and a submission to the Department of Taxation.
Sorry, Commissioner, would you, would you mind going to 2.2 first and then coming back to 2.1?
Yep, I will. 2.2 for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove a capital outlay budget request for the Battle Mountain Sewer Department that was not included in the previous budget workshop, a gravity sewer, and the amount of $2,481,585.
Lake and Sullivan for the record. So this was one that I missed in the budget workshop. It was in the backup, but I just didn't have it on the agenda.
Gotcha. Commissioner, have any questions? Okay, public? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve capital outlay budget request for the Battle Mountain Sewer Department that was not included in the previous budget in, for a gravity sewer in the amount of $2,481,585.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll bounce back to 2.1 for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the Lander County tentative budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025 and a submission to the Department of Taxation.
Lake and Sullivan for the record. So this one is including the project. I just went ahead and included it in here in hopes that you guys would approve it, and then, so it's already included. And then I also added the two new funds that you guys had approved this year, the opioid settlement one, and then the risk management. So those are in here as well.
Any questions? Public have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to come up?
Yes, yeah, please come up and state your name for the record.
My name is Carrie Stewart, personal and at the behest of some people who are not able to be here today. Question about why do we need an assistant county manager for a county this size when Amaka doesn't have one, much larger, as Morello doesn't even have a county manager.
Okay. Does Commissioner want a question or build that?
I don't have agenda to even discuss that.
Well, so, when Amaka does have one.
It's not on their, it's not on their page.
Yeah, they, they have, they have an assistant county manager.
So, is this something we can discuss on this item?
I think it's part of the budget packet, so.
Okay.
And the idea behind this is putting redundancy behind every position in the county. I don't think that, at some point, there'll be a board probably elected up there that doesn't like me very much, and they, it'd be nice if somebody filled the position that did know what was happening, so it's not dropped. Every time that, in the past, when a position's been lost, our building department's a fine example. When, when somebody just up and leaves, it leaves this county in turmoil and causes a lot of, a lot of problems, so it creates redundancy. And the other thing is, I heard in the last meeting, I didn't comment on it, that we're growing government. But if you go back in history to where we are today, there's always been a county manager, whether, but it was just under a different title here in Lander County. And, and then we also lost a position back when we joined Public Works into one department instead of having road and bridge and water and sewer. We joined them into one. So we're actually back to the same, same number of employees and staffing that we had 15 years ago.
Carrie, Joe, hold on. One of the, my, for this position is, is we have a huge project potentially coming in here, that there's no way that one person, that the county manager's, that energy company that's coming in here, and there's no way that one person under that, or if the energy part doesn't go in, whatever part that we be put into that, because there is a lot of potential going into that, that you can have one person doing all of that, there's no way that can be done. So with my, for my justification in that was that there has to be more than one person to do that job. There's no way one person does, especially if the energy company and all of the things that go underneath that. And so that's where my justification is, because I've gotten a few phone calls on this, and I'm going to also, I'm not going to mention names or anything, I'll hide that. But the other issue was the, with the screaming and yelling that I've gotten over the last couple of days are because of the mention of who that was a suggestion to be put in that. That, none of that, none of that stuff has come in front of the commissioners, it hasn't gone that far. None of that issue has even, it's all rumor. And if, and Mr. Ray must have said before he had an opinion, he's perfectly entitled to his opinion, that doesn't mean that that's even been discussed. And so we have a town of uproaring screaming and yelling over a rumor of somebody's opinion. He's totally entitled to his opinion, and until we even get that far, we haven't even, there's no job description, there's no nothing yet for that, for that. We are just at the very bones of where this is starting. And so I think that, the one thing that I've heard over the last few days, honestly, which I think is very, very sad, it's not over the position, ma'am, it's over who that, that was suggestion was. And I, it hasn't, that is mind-boggling to me that at this point, that doesn't matter. We are, we haven't even got off the ground with this before the screaming and yelling and the mud fighting. And I'm going to say one thing, I thought, y'all, I'm hard about this, and this has nothing to do with you, this is just the screaming and yelling I've gotten in the last few days. You know, when the county manager we had before, the screaming and yelling because we hired from outside, oh my God, we had, you know, people, they could throw fl, you know, flames at us, we were, they were thrown at us. Then we hire from within, and people are screaming and yelling, and the things that go on social media is just unbelievable. And I've obviously had plenty of time to sit at home and read the things that go on. And so for something that, for people to keep in mind, if they want people, for example, this job, or any job in this county to go out for hire, I would never in my life bring my family to this county and want to apply for a job with the way that the people talk and scream and yell online and the things that they say about each other. For, and I'll, and I'm going to make this a public announcement, so everybody knows, I'm going to only be here until February after budget, and then I'll be leaving. And forever, I love, long God allows me to be on this earth. But I'm telling you, when you guys have to look something like yourselves in the face at the things that you say about, and I'm not pointing to you, I'm just saying in general, that people say about one another in this community, and yes, it's a small community, but if you ever want growth, or you ever want people to come in with more knowledge just, just because you need knowledge to grow, God help you because the awful things that people within this community say about each other. I'm awed at the things that I heard yesterday, and it wasn't just from one person, it was from, I've heard it from a handful of people. It's various, it's just, it doesn't matter, you can't, it doesn't matter what side of the fence you're on, people screaming and yelling and saying horrible things. I would never bring my family to this community with knowing that I'd be ripped into shreds, God help, if I didn't do something that one side of this community or the other side of this community didn't like. So just food for thought, people for going on in existence that, have a little compassion and think deeper than your personal feelings about someone, and if somebody can do a job or can't do a job, and instead of automatically hating one another, because let me tell you, we're, we're all we got, and we better bring it together and have some respect for one another, because, you know, if we don't love each other and care for each other, nobody else gives a shit. And that's all there is. So just food for thought, okay?
Okay, Joe.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you for that dressing down. I came here because I have been listening to how much money this county has, and that they don't seem to know what to do with it, and seeing how well they have done increasing all of these salaries for all of our county employees, which I think is a fabulous thing, that they have been able to create such healthy salaries for our county employees. But I want to make sure that those people are good, qualified people in those positions, and that those positions are worthy of being filled by people who are qualified in those positions. And I do feel personally, not from anybody but myself, that this county has a public relations problem promoting what they want in this county, and that is why I am here.
I wasn't pointing that to you, I was just, because I was about barreled on the same idea, so.
So, that was my question. I went out and I looked on the county websites to see what other counties had assistant county managers. It does sometimes feel like there's a bit of nepotism in this county. It does feel like there are a select few who have maybe more power and control and don't feel like they have to tell the taxpayers of this county what's going on. And I do have a right to come here and ask and expect to be told why we're doing what we're doing with my tax money, and that's why I'm here today. And that is a conversation that I have had with many of my friends who are taxpayers who do not feel that they want to come here and be talked to in a manner in which I feel I was just talked down to.
I just said I was not talking to you directly. I'm upset.
I know you said that you were not talking to me directly.
I'm not, Carrie, Joe, I'm not.
I know.
I'm just saying, I'm not, and I'm sorry if you took it that way. I'm not talking to you that way, I'm just talking.
But you're obviously upset about something that's being said.
For one, it's difficult for me to speak.
I go back to the public relations problem that is obvious.
So, for one, I have a difficulty speaking, so this tone is a monotone that I don't, that's my normal tone, so.
So, I suggest that you look at your budget carefully and make sure that every position within this county is being dealt with in a professional manner, filled by people who are worthy of having those positions professionally qualified.
I agree.
And if there are people who have more than one job, perhaps those people need to step down from those positions. If there are people who are working for elected officials, making more than elected officials, maybe those positions need to be looked at also. I am done.
So, I would, Miss Carrie, my office door is always open. Welcome to anything, if there's something that we're missing as far as getting out to the public, we're more than happy to work on it. As far as the raises that you, that you alluded to, that did not, none of us that are salary employees got any of them.
I think that's great.
No, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that that, that was for the, the employees, but the salary people, for clarification for the public. None of us, myself, Sean, Donnie.
I think that's fabulous. I think it's fabulous that the county people got grief, I do, honestly.
Okay, so, no, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're doing the best we can to, to get things out. We started our newsletter, but the rumor's always better than, than reality, and, and we're, 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 we're open book for anybody that wants to know.
Again, key on. Let the county know why you're doing what you're doing.
That's my, was my, my theory behind mine, honestly, was because of this project, that when I went to, because at first I had a hard time adjusting this as well, but mine was this is a huge project, a multi-billion dollar project, and that's the way I was looking at it. So coming from me, because you're also paying, you know, the taxpayers, that was how I was looking at this position. So that's my justification in that.
Mike? So, coming into this, I've been the commissioner, started in January. We've had this discussion, knowing earlier on in commission meetings way back, talking about this. And in reality, the best business practice is succession management, and that was my support, is to make sure that you get the, the next person to, to see if, number one, degrade somebody if, if they're the next person. Who it is, it don't matter, but since that meeting, which was early on, when I took this seat, this is, I too received a lot of phone calls, but off of that too, is we've had no, there's been nobody ever called prior to this. It's been public information. The information goes out, it seems like once it hits, that's, that's when you get the phone calls and everything else, is, is two days before the meeting. But succession management, that's, this is nothing more than succession management, and succession management, no matter who the person is, is the right decision and the right business decision for this county. And it is going in a positive direction. Decisions are being made, the right decisions. I mean, we, we, this is the most people in the room that I've seen in, in the year that I've been here, and, and not at you, Carrie, Joe, but, but overall for the phone call people too, is, this is the way that this is discussed, is, is to come to the meetings and do it in person. It's not for myself as a commissioner to carry somebody's flag or anything else, but it is the right business decision is to do this. This project could be, looks like it'll be real big, and if anything else comes behind it to fill these homes and that, that's going to be as, as large as well. And it is a lot on one person, and it, it deserves to, to, to make this decision from the chair that I sit in, is to make the right business decisions for the county and for the taxpayers.
And I can speak as well, Carrie, Joe, that that's my, my, exactly why I support it as well, is the succession management and having, I'll be 12 years now as a commissioner, and I've had multiple county commissioners work for me. The majority of them not local people that have, had had the degrees, credentials, and I can't say that everything was the best. So I'm not always wrapped up into the degrees and this and that. What's more important to me is do they have a vested role in our community? Do they know the background? Because there's so much that's lost. When one county manager shuts down, you have a new board, new county manager, it's like you're playing catch-up all once again. We've set things in place, we, we've put, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think we're 25 to 35 million now away in a rainy day fund for future prosperity in case the county ever has any issues. We're looking at succession with our county manager, with possibly our building inspector, just so when these people leave, we have people that are educated in the ranks of the goings-on in Lander County, so we can take that transition and make it smooth, which makes it best for everybody. And it's like, I think it was Mike that said that, it's like, yes, we approved a budgeted position, but there's no job description that's been created yet, there's nothing. It's just, it's, it's, it's just in the infancy, moving forward, looking at that progression. That's, that's my, my, my stance on it. Any other comments?
I just want to apologize. If I sound like that, like I'm attacking you, like, that's, I'm sorry, but that's my, the tone of voice that I carry, and I am not, and I was not attacking you, and I'm sorry. Now, my emotion, yeah, because I screamed that, and it had nothing to do with you, and I truly apologize if that's how you took it, but it really isn't directed at you, for one, that's just the tone I'm stuck with, and the ugly look that I get on my face is the one that's I'm stuck with too. And so I do apologize if, for you taking that personally, because it wasn't driven toward you.
Okay, is there any other comment? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve the Lander County tentative budget for fiscal year 24, 25 with the submission to the Department of Taxation with the adjustment stated.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move into correspondence, 3.1 correspondence reports, futures into items. So do we need to put something on to address feral cats and code enforcement, something where we can discuss it more in depth?
I do.
Can we put some ideas around on that? Guys, have anything?
Nope, I'd like that on there.
Okay, anymore? Okay, I'll hear, actually, a comment for non-agenda items.
How about the second part of that? What the places that are shit holes that aren't being, uh.
It was so stated.
I mean, you brought up the feral cats.
No, I did, I did, I said code enforcement.
And code enforcement, yes.
Tom, Kirk, ask him to write.
Thank you, Tom.
And, had a discussion with Bert to see, I, I don't know if it's an agenda item, but to continue discussion on maybe some placement of some dumpsters to stop the, the trash dumping, please.
Sorry about that, Mike. I need to get some numbers put together on that for a potential transfer site here in Battle Mountain. So I'll, I'll put that on.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items. Is there public comment?
Mr. Burts, I'm not sure if Mr. Helming had an item she wanted on, she'd made mention of it to me, but.
Dee, are you there? Is there an item you'd like on the next agenda?
Hold on, sorry, I had to switch off mute. We, Miranda, our chamber's person came to me and talked to me about the idea of a vacancy tax.
What'd she say?
A vacancy, a potential vacancy tax.
Vacancy?
Yeah.
She's talking about.
Do you want me to explain a little bit of it, or just, what do you want?
You're talking about for businesses that, that is commercial property that isn't being operated? Is that what you're talking about?
Commercial properties that have been sitting empty for two years or more to try to force, to try to give them incentive to do something with it instead of allowing it to sit there and deteriorate and the wheat to grow on it.
So maybe that's. Bill, did you? No, I just, she discussed that idea with her before.
I'm sorry, I can't hear anything you're saying.
Okay, so do we want to, are we making that an agenda item?
Yeah, so you guys, we should have a discussion for vacancy tax.
Okay, Dee, we'll put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay. So now, public comment for non-agenda items.
Aaron Martinez with AM Engineering, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware, all the residents received a notice for April twenty-third and twenty-fourth for the Austin Realignment Project. There'll be a town hall where those residents are being asked to come and sign the maps. From four to seven P M. we'll be there, and anybody that cannot make it, the team will make accommodations to go wherever they are to get them to sign the map.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Is there any other public comment? Okay, I'll hear a motion for.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody.